I'm calling the meeting to order. The, uh, this is the regular meeting of the, uh, CDU, um, school board. We're going to start, uh, with adjustments to the agenda. We are going to move, um, uh, item 5.6. Uh, the, um, uh, presentation on the England Shakespeare field trip by Katie Guerra. We're going to move that to the beginning of presentations so that she does not have to stay with us all of this evening. Um, and, uh, are there any other adjustments to the agenda? The, uh, just, oh, okay. Then the next item is audience and communications. And, uh, I noticed that we have a large audience here. This reminds me, have, have we circulated a sign up sheet for this audience? The, uh...
Well, we have five...
Do we need a sign up? Do we need a sign up sheet for the audience?
Five minutes on the agenda.
Yeah, if you could, um...
For anybody who talks, they have to sign up.
Pass that around. And everyone, if you would, uh, sign for, uh, having been in our audience, that would be great. I think much of this, uh, from the looks of our audience, much of this has to do with the, um, the turf fields. We have five minutes on our agenda for, uh, audience communications. Let me just ask, are there people here for something other than the turf fields? Okay, so, uh, the audience communication is going to be on turf fields. Let me ask this group, do you want one spokesperson to spend your, um, now four minutes to, uh, make a presentation? Or would you like to have, um, several people make thirty minute, or thirty second comments? Not thirty minute, thirty second comments to us. And remember, this is, uh, audience communication, so it's not going to be discussion. It's going to be, if, if the board has questions to ask, they'll ask, but, but it's not an open discussion. So, i- is there a preference, a spokesperson or individuals? Hearing none, whatever, whoever is the first individual who would like to make a comment for the next thirty seconds or so, that would be great. Yes?
I'm John Howe.
John?
And I'm just speaking about the bond vote, and I, I think the people who, who made the petition for it did an excellent job, but I'd like to discourage the vote, the board, from having another special vote. But to, if you want to bring it up, bring it up at town meeting when we have the entire budget. Perhaps do a poll with three or four different options to get a sense of what the community wants, because certainly there is a strong interest. And perhaps that way, build support for either a scaled-down version or the same version, and take another special vote at the general election in November. That way, the citizens will have an overall look at the school budget and its needs. Do we have the money to fund all our programs? In a more holistic approach. So I'm not speaking against the turf project or against another vote, but a good process that allows us to see the overall budget and the overall mission of the school. Thank you.
John, thank you so much for coming and giving us those thoughts, and, uh, and they, they have been heard by our board. Are there other comments? While we're getting through this part of our, uh, our session very quickly. Um, the, uh, just, just so you know, when we get to, um, uh, on our agenda to, um, uh... I, it's, the, I have the wrong agenda in front of me, I'm sorry. The, uh, six, six point two, that's going to be a board discussion, the bond vote debrief. So if you have comments that you want to make, that's not going to be an opportunity for making it at that time. That's going to be a board discussion as we discuss how we're going to move forward. So if you do have comments, this is the time to make them. Yes?
I would like to disagree with Mr. Howe. As a parent who was involved with the football program, when the fields were being redone eleven years ago and seeing what's happened over the last eleven years, I think that our students desperately need the opportunity to get outside and move. And I believe that a turf, the turf committee has done tremendous volunteer work to raise money that should be respected, and I'm hopeful that the board will consider moving forward on this sooner rather than later. We really need something done. Having the, um, as I understand, the athletic budget is only part of three percent of the activities budget. And, um, when we talk about the overall school budget, I think the fact that this volunteer group was willing to put out this effort and raise so much money that it should be respected and some funding through a bond issue, I think a, uh, one hundred and fourteen vote difference is not a mandate either way, and I'd like to, to see that before.
Okay. I'm, I'm actually not sure that, that you and the previous speaker disagree all that much, the, there may have been some semantic differences. The other comments?
I'd just like to add one thing.
Sure.
In, in reading a lot of, in front porch forum, I, I think there's, there's two issues colliding here, and they're dram, and they're dram, uh, Fred Palmer, and they're dramatically different. I feel like some of the comments are a referendum on sports. That, that's not what the turf issue is all about. It's not about whether sports should be continued, not be continued. It's about what's the best facilities to put in place. That's it. And there's been so many others, other tangents that it's taken on that there's no desire to split the community in any way, shape, or form. So I agree, there's more information needs to be out there, but people need to take the time to read it, and I don't think anyone's done that, quite frankly. I really don't, so thank you.
Yes. Comment, well, taken. I, the, uh, just, one of my observations have, has been on some of the feedback that I've seen is that, uh, all sorts of questions arose about things that were addressed in the various, uh, information that was disseminated. Perhaps it wasn't disseminated well, but, uh, but, uh, it was out there. Other, other comments before we move on to our next item? Well, I, as always, um, I, I recognize many of the people here from the turf committee, and as always, I thank you for all of our effort, all of your efforts, and, uh, and we, we are going to be working on this going forward. Um, we, we are a school board, so we do not move quickly. Um, the, but we, we are going to be, uh, taking a serious look at this, and we're going to be, uh, moving forward, um, presumably, uh, sometime, uh, this fall as we keep the process moving. The next item is... Yeah? Yes.
You're very welcome to say that.
Thanks. And I would encourage you to, because our, our next item, the, uh, presentations, um, we're going to start with a student presentation by Katie, who must be that young lady right there. She's going to tell us all about, um, the Shakespeare England trip that went for the first time last year. And Katie is going to be doing this in five minutes or less.
All right, hello, everyone. I was on the Shakespeare England trip this summer, and what we did, we, we did a series of five seminars before we actually left on the trip, and we studied more about Shakespeare's life, the time period, his plays and writing, the setting of all his plays, and we really got to analyze them very well, because we acted out scenes and monologues from these plays. And so, we did this for about five months before we actually left, and then in the middle of July, we went to England. And what we did on the trip, on our first day there, got off the plane that we had left the day before, and we got on a bus, and we went to Oxford, Cambridge, and Windsor, all in the span of a few hours. So you can see here, this year, it is Windsor, Windsor Castle, and the Queen was actually there when we got to go to Windsor, fun fact. You can see Oxford right there, and there's the outside of the building of Oxford. Fun fact also, Oxford and Cambridge are both part of the same college system, so if you get a, a degree from Oxford, Oxford is kind of the same as a degree from Cambridge, they're just in different places. So next, we went to Stratford, upon Avon, which is where Shakespeare was born, and we did a lot of different things there in the three days that we spent. We got to see his birthplace, we got to see Anne Hathaway's college, and we got to see the Holy Trinity Church where he's buried. Stratford is also the home to the Royal Shakespeare Company, and we got to see three of their plays, which I will tell you about at the end of our presentation. So next, we went to London, which is where we spent most of the trip. We spent, this was only like, maybe an eighth of the picture, if not even an eighth, this is maybe like one thirty second of the pictures that I took when we were in London, because there are so many things to see. And, um, so we did a lot of regular London tourist thing things, like seeing the London Eye, and Buckingham Palace, and the Tower Bridge, and the Guards. But we also got to see a bunch of plays there that weren't necessarily Shakespeare. Of course, we went to the Globe, and we saw a play there, but we also got to see the musical Matilda, and we also got to see The Curb of Inishman, um, a BBC prom, which was happening while we were there, and War Horse, if any of you have seen the movie. This is the, you got to see the stage version of it. So these are all the shows we got to see. You can see the Royal Shakespeare Company ones. We got to see Hamlet on our first night there after being on a plane for eight hours. We got to see As You Like It as a matinee, which was very fun, and it had a lot of musical elements to it. And we also got to see one of Shakespeare's older plays, Titus Andronicus, which is very, very gory, and actually, I would encourage all of you to read it, because it's actually very interesting. And as I said, we got to see War Horse, The Curb of Inishman, which was starring Daniel Radcliffe when we saw it. Matilda, which is, act, was actually put together by the Royal Shakespeare Company, which is why it had the logo in the corner. Then we got to see Macbeth at the Globe Theatre, and we got to see BBC Prom III, which was a series of Renaissance ballets. And it was in the Royal Albert Hall, which is just spectacular in terms of architecture. And so, what I took away from the trip, I got to see a lot more of what Shakespeare means by seeing it performed in the original English and seeing it performed in original settings or new settings, and I got, uh, much greater appreciation for his work. But aside from seeing all the literature performed, I got to spend a lot of time with people that I didn't necessarily get to see in school that much, and it was cool to think that people from all walks of life came together over this one trip, because we all love theater, and now we're really great friends. And you can see us eating ice cream right there. So yes, thank you for watching.
Katie, thank you so much for doing this for us, and, uh, and, uh, and, of course, uh, keeping it within five minutes, so that Jean could ask you a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It wouldn't be a board meeting if I didn't have a question. So help you, remind me what Shakespeare would do in our regular curriculum? So you do Romeo and Juliet?
Yeah, Romeo and Juliet, Macbeth. I'm in advanced acting right now, so we just did a series of Shakespeare monologues, and we're doing the play Twelfth Night for our final exam, if any of you would like to come and see that.
So what I was going to ask is like, did, what was the learning like to learn Romeo and Juliet in core versus seeing it, learning it in this kind of context with a...
We didn't actually see Romeo and Juliet before.
No, but you, you studied Romeo and Juliet in core.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's one of the situations compared to studying Shakespeare this way.
When you're studying it in the core, or in, in your grade ti, we studied Macbeth in our grade ten in English class, and, um, then we got to see it here. It was very di, while in the English class, it was a lot more analytical, while seeing it live, you got to see a lot of the subtext that maybe wouldn't have been analyzed as closely, or the comedic elements of such a gory play as Macbeth. And, um, and really bringing the acting element to it, it just gives the emotion that much more than the poetry.
It's interesting, so it's not like one's better than the other, it's just different?
It's just very different, yeah.
Thank you.
And when is Twelfth Night being performed?
Twelfth Night will be performed in January at some point. A tentative date is Thursday, January sixteenth, but that isn't finalized yet.
And can we get you to, uh, tell Jeff so he can pass that information on to the board?
Yes, definitely.
Good. Are there any other questions? Katie, once again, thank you so much. It's, it's a pleasure having students come and talk to us, and, uh, and you did a wonderful job. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all for watching.
Thanks, Katie. The, um, our next presentation is, um, going to be, uh, our Common Core presentation by our principal, Jeff Evans. Take it away, Jeff.
Yeah, I want to note that Katie was phenomenal in STEM Lot as well, for anybody who got a chance to see it.
I played Patsy, the one with the coconuts.
Arguably the best role in the board.
It was great, it was great.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Leah, like last time?
Yes.
Twenty minutes, shut me down.
Yes, boss. Right there.
Thanks. So, um, last time, we talked about standards and what we've been doing with standards, and this time, you were asking for some information about where Common Core fits in and the impact that we have, uh, in the immediate sense. And so, in looking how to do that in twenty minutes, Common Core is a monster, and there's so much we could talk about. So what I really wanted to focus on here is the S-PAC, and as I said last time, that's what will be replacing the kneecaps, is the standardized tests, um, for ELA and for math, beginning in the spring of next year. So next year's juniors will be taking this new assessment. And I went to a, uh, presentation last Friday and stole their PowerPoint, and we'll just show you a few of the slides to give you some of the information. Then I'm going to close by tying into what we've done the last two years, um, here at CDU and within the CSSU district to start preparing, okay? So I did finally find out what the acronym means, so the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. So, first thing, we've, we've lived with kneecaps for a long time. This is a pretty good, um, comparison of what'll be different, uh, between the two. Now, I'm not going to spend a ton of time, um, focusing all of this, but some of them are particularly, uh, of importance. This one right here is one of the biggest ones. In the past, it's just been a summative. It's just been standardized test, you sit down and take. The new S-PAC will include formative assessments and interim assessments, but they're optional. So it's not like you have to figure out how to schedule those, but they're there, and they're there for, as a, as a tool for instruction for teachers, um, and obviously for students. And another big difference is the testing window. Instead of three weeks to take it, you have twelve weeks. So that means, unlike the kneecaps now, where everybody's taking them at once, and it's a real stress around the system, um, you can rotate students through this in that, in that twelve week period. And that's important, because the biggest difference is all of these exams are taken on a computer, which is entirely new. Kneecap was paper and pencil, this is all computerized. And along that line, now I'll get to that later. So here's how it gets constructed. So these are based on Common Core standards, and I'll speak a little bit about that at the end. And you have the summative assessment that we'll be giving in the spring, uh, in that twelve week window, but also, they'll be giving us opportunities to use formative assessments with students, and give interim assessments if we are, if we so choose. And the emphasis the other day when I was there Friday was on how this can really be a tool, um, to help teachers with instruction. And one of the things that they shared with us is what a year might look like with a Smarter Balanced, um, Assessment. And these are just suggestions, these are not what, what a school has to do, but, uh, they suggested giving the interim assessment as a pre-assessment at the beginning of the year, and then building in some formative assessments along the way, ultimately ending with the, um, with a summative assessment in the spring. One of the things that I, I thought about is next year's juniors taking this, and how, how are we going to get interim assessments, formative assessments, and a summative assessment? You know, where, where do we find the time? Where do we sac, what are we sacrificing? Are we sacrificing class time? Uh, and one of the questions that was asked was, in high school, only juniors are taking this exam, and so, wouldn't it be great if we had formative assessments and interim assessments based on ninth and tenth grade standards and targets? So that we could help prepare the students and get information that we can use to inform instruction much earlier. Unfortunately, those don't exist yet, but they're working on them, and they do realize that that's, that there's a need for that. And the same thing could be said for elementary school, they start taking the third grade, but first and second grade wants the same kind of, uh, opportunity to define some formative assessments and some intervals. So here's, here's the cool part, and this for a long time, I couldn't understand this, because they were telling us that what's so unique about this test is that unlike the kneecaps, where everybody takes exactly the same test, exactly the same questions, um, this, each test is unique to the student, meaning that, um, if David and I are taking, are both eleventh graders and taking the test, he and I might get very different sets of questions. And every time I answer a question, that helps determine what my next question is. And so there is a bank of questions for this level, for the eleventh grade level, a huge bank of questions, and they ask a midpoint question right away for a question. And that answer, if you get it wrong, you'll get an easier question on the next one. And that continues to happen until they narrow this window down to get, um, questions that they feel are appropriate for this particular student taking the test. So my question was, how do you come up with a standardized score for something like that? And it's an algorithm that I will never in my life understand, or even try, but the way it basically works is, the student selects the item, responds, it does an estimate on the score, and it gives you the next logical question. So they ask a balance of questions that theoretically you should be able to answer and you should not be able to answer. And then, if you think about, um, Olympic diving, when you watch Olympic diving and you go back, there's a score for degree of difficulty and a score for execution. In many ways, that's what's happening here. So the questions that were answered each have a score in terms of complexity, and that's factored into the execution of it too, in terms of how many you get right. And so you're getting a score that apparently is a pretty good indicator, um, of where you are. Have any questions about that?
I think some of the GREs or, uh, this contest work like that. Or some of the other...
I don't think so.
Nursing, nursing exams.
Yeah. And it would have to be computer. And it's called computer adaptive testing, that's what the CMT's...
I have a question, Jeff.
Sure. And then, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I come up?
Go ahead, yeah, John.
At the end of what you're saying, will, will understand where that student is? Because if, if I'm achieving and I've gone from middle and keep getting less involved questions, and you keep getting more involved questions, I don't, that's what I'm thinking about, and you'll probably tell us somewhere.
Yeah, there's a, there's a degree of difficulty built into each question that is factored into your final score.
I think, I think what it does is it keeps, it keeps the test from a really high achieving student, doesn't waste a lot of time answering questions out of ways too easy. And, and students probably doesn't have to deal with all the frustration of...
Of never getting an answer.
Yeah, basically, if your student shut it down, like we're saying with kneecaps.
Absolutely.
Right.
It's clearly better in that way, but then, I'm just wondering, where am I in the, the spectrum of, of what my grade is? I'm going to achieve, because my questions keep getting more adjusted to my capability.
You can, you can get overall scores and, and you can get individual scores, right?
I'm not sure, I just know that...
I think you can, because that would be the most helpful part, yeah, his profiles for individuals.
But then, so, but that question, like, if you, if you were really struggling, you, all you could, were capable of doing was answering the bottom ten percent of the question, you wouldn't, even if you got the bottom ten percent right, you wouldn't achieve the standard.
Exactly.
Right.
And then, I'll point out something in another slide or two, but real quickly, what are the advantages for, um, special education students? And actually, that's where I wanted to talk about a couple of things. I really like what this does for, um, students, uh, who are on plans, because, first of all, I asked the other day, how wide is that range in terms of how far they'll go? So in other words, you've got eleventh graders on a plan, and it's clearly demonstrated that he or she is capable of doing work at a ninth or a tenth grade level or an eighth grade level, then what's the point of asking them a bank full of eleventh grade questions? It will back up the targets all the way, uh, as far as two grade levels, and it will extend the targets as far as two grade levels as well. That's, those are the parameters that they've built into this test so far, okay? So, that I love, because it can give you really good information. And, uh, being a father of a son with, uh, with delays, I really like this, because for years and years and years, we get the kneecap scores that said he was not proficient. In second grade, he's not proficient in second grade. Third grade, he takes a third grade test, he's not proficient. Over and over and over, you get the same exact information. I'm very, very well aware of what he cannot do. But the logic, for me anyway, would be, if he didn't make him second grade when he's in third grade, take the second grade test again, so we can find out what he does know how that he didn't know, and can do that he couldn't do, and use that information to inform instruction. So this is sort of what this is accomplishing. So... So that's, you know, in really small nutshell, uh, what the common, what the S-PAC will look like. And certainly, there are a lot of things we've got ironed out between now and next spring. There is a field test being given this year, so a number of schools in Vermont, we're, we're not one of them, our district tried to get in, and they're late, and are waiting what, uh, are testing this out. And so we'll get a lot of feedback from them about the administration of this. Obviously, there are a lot of things to be concerned about, like the technology challenges and training. We want to get to a point where, uh, these tests are true indicators of what a student knows, understands, and can do, and are not impacted by their technological abilities. And that, that could be a challenge. Um, and one of the ways to address that challenge is with those formative assessments, um, and interim assessments, so that they practice this along the way. And so I want to just point out a couple of things about that before I talk about what CDU has done. Oh, another thing that they'll do is, with this technology, for instance, when you're taking math, when there's a bank of questions where you need a calculator, calculator appears. When it's questions you're not supposed to use a calculator for, calculator disappears. If you're an ELL student, and you don't understand a word, hover over it, it translates it into your language. And not just your language, but in the context it's being used in that sentence.
Wow. Awesome.
For students with special needs, there's a text of speech. You can have a passage read to you, for instance. So there are some phenom, there's some phenomenal potential here, and, and we're really excited about all of that.
Now, to shift.
To Common Core, last year was the first year we were introduced to it, knowing that it would be coming in 2015, and the, that's, the SU decided, there's two major shifts in Common Core from what our current practice looks like, and one of them is informational reading, the emphasis on informational reading. I believe, and I might get this wrong, but in the, uh, lower grade levels, uh, the test will be thirty percent, um, fiction, and, or literature rather, and seventy percent informational. Well, in high school, that's a switch. So thirty percent of the, of the assessment is, uh, literature, and seventy percent of the assessment is, um, informational text. And so the focus last year, and you know this, I'm sure you've heard many times, I read the principal reports from Sean, so you're pretty aware that last year, our focus was on informational reading, um, and these are some of the things that we did, uh, throughout the year in our in-service. And then this year, we shifted, uh, to writing. The first two days of pre-service was dedicated to Common Core by all of the SU, and, um, one of the things that we did was we asked departments to discuss ways to approach the S-PAC, and, um, we shared, let me just, this here, let me pull this up for you.
You'd be failing the S-PAC right now.
See what I mean about a little more? Okay. So, um, what we did was, we shared a performance task, they've got release items out there, and one of the things that, uh, the S- And one of the things that the S-PAC will be asking people to do is something called a performance task. And so we shared these with all of our teachers. And this is an example of a performance task 11th grader might have to do. This particular one is about nuclear power, friend or foe. And it asks students to use a number of resources, online, videos, discussion led by a teacher, and then actually write a position paper on whether they're Congresswoman, this is an aide of a Congresswoman who does all the research, the Congresswoman's supposed to give the speech, and at the last minute, Congresswoman says, I'm too busy, you're writing it. And so then they actually have to write the position paper using, citing a lot of evidence. And so what we did, we looked at a law, we looked at this, and we said, what kinds of things can we put in place to ensure practice opportunities for our students? And we asked departments to have these discussions. And these are some of the examples here. The core created one, 10th grade did as well, business created a couple. And what I will do is to share the 10th grade one. And they gave it as a pre-assessment. And so that's an example here. The purpose is as a contributing member of our community, it's important you are able to evaluate resources, communicate clearly in writing. Purpose of this pre-assessment is for you to practice and demonstrate how good you are at this stuff. So you read, use a strategy, then you write. And then they gave them a bunch of resources, created a rubric. And there's a lot of resources here, very similar to the packet on nuclear power. And so these are some of the things that our teachers put in place in those two days at the beginning of the year. And have had students, student state, and some of them are still being applied later on. And finally, I just want to close with a couple of things about what we've done with people here. At CBU, administrators have been on several committees with Common Core and have gone to a number of conferences over the past two years. We have three teachers right now, three teachers who are on a committee from CSSU who will be going to free trainings as well. And Chris O'Donnell, one of our note takers over here, is on the digital, digital library committee. And for those of you who don't know what that is, all these formatives and intervals and, and release tasks and all of those things are going to be put into this digital library. And then how the state communicates that with us and how they make it accessible to us are the types of things that the committee will help accomplish. Is that halfway, right?
Yeah, every state that's doing it has a coalition of teachers. So I'm on the Vermont coalition of digital, digital library. And you're obligated to do X number, and it's just building, it's just kind of building the informational texts they'll be using.
And so we're actually really fortunate to have a teacher on that because that's a, it's a great resource for us that could certainly go untapped if we didn't have anybody on the inside. So, questions?
Questions, folks?
I have a, can we ask questions?
Let me give the board, well, the board is being slow. The board just got in. Lorna, why don't you start and we'll get to the.
It's a quick question. I was just wondering about standardized, oh, sorry.
No, go right ahead.
First one, then all of them.
The computers that are required for the standardized tests, do we have the equipment to?
Yeah, right now, what we're being told is that the state was very concerned about making sure this is accessible for all of the schools. And so right now, they have built the test in a way that virtually any computer can work with. There are some issues with Windows 7's computers right now, which is almost all of ours here, but they promised they'll have those fixed by the field test time. But eventually, this may evolve into pretty iPad specific and stylus, but right now, the plan is whatever you've got should work.
Lorna?
As you presented this, I would say that's what struck me is its great ability, potential ability to help individual students and help teachers recognize and work with individual students and understand where they at, where they are and what they need. So that, that's sort of the formative assessment. So will they be, will that be up to the teacher to use the formative assessments or does, do you make that decision?
To be honest, I, I've just learned all of this Friday.
Okay.
Majority of it. And we haven't begun those discussions, but those discussions we'll have to have. And I know that the SU is going to give a lot of thought to how they want the entire district to go about preparing for S-PAC and how to use the formatives and how to use the intervals as well. The fact that they're optional is great because it reduces some of that stress of scheduling. But on the other hand, they're great tools. And they can, you know, there's something that we're gonna have to try to figure out how to use productively without sacrificing too much of the curriculum that goes on to stay here.
That was my question too. A few minutes to figure it out.
Having presided over misadventure in another computerized standardized test, the software will work.
Okay.
I, I hope. I mean, it will be better than the ACA software and we won't be doing the alpha or the beta, we'll have gamma or delta.
I'm certainly less nervous about it because they're field testing it with so many schools here in Vermont in the spring. And so by the time the fall or spring rolls around when we're giving these, I'm hoping that we're in a much better place.
Are the standardized tests on the internet?
Uh, you know, I'm not exactly sure to ask this, and I imagine everybody's gonna have to have a password and a code to get on.
How do you keep people from not taking the test? Not, not staying focused?
Oh, well, see, first of all, one of the good things about this, by the way, is that you can take it, leave it, come back later and take it again, because everybody's test is different. There is no advantage of talking to somebody else who's already seen the test.
But can you check Facebook in the middle while you're taking it? Is that your question?
Yeah. Like cheat, I don't know.
Oh, cheat, that's interesting.
Google the answer. Yeah.
Text your buddy there.
I'm not entirely sure, except I think that they have built a way to keep you from being able to Google for the answers. And that's my sense. Yeah.
I guess I'm kind of curious as to, and you probably don't even know the answer, is what the final report looks like. It's just like the NECAP, you just get like a number, your proficient, not a proficient. But it seems like this type of testing, and I know that some of our teachers have taken our ESLs and compared it to the Common Core, that you would get more of a detailed type of report about the student? Is that, is that what you're hoping?
Our understanding is that we will get very detailed reports that we can use to inform instruction, to do interventions. The other thing is that we're gonna need the results much faster than we ever did in NECAPs. It just takes like three months to develop.
And they're doing this, what, first through eighth, and they're gonna be doing it every year?
Third through eighth.
Because we only.
Third through eighth.
You just hope that they catch all these assessments among the kids moving through the system, you know, where their deficiencies are before they hit the high school, and we only take the test once.
Yeah, it's a good opportunity for me to add my commentary, whether you want it or not. And that is, I'm, I'm a little concerned with the logic behind giving this year, next year's 11th graders this test, given they've had NECAP all the way through. And what do we do with that information? It's an entirely different test. We're being told to anticipate significantly lower scores across the nation than, than whatever you've been testing before. And so looking at it as any kind of growth model for our 11th graders is not, is not possible. And in some ways, I prefer to see them give it to the third graders, and then the next year, you give it to third and fourth, so on and so forth, so that we are truly getting a great, a great base to make some judgments. It's kind of like teaching somebody how to drive an automatic and then taking them to their driving test, tell them you gotta drive the stick. And having them say to you, well, you never taught me how to drive the stick. And you said, well, I taught you how to drive. So I'm a little concerned about how reliable those first few experiences could be.
Jeff.
Well, they're starting to get us great awareness.
Jeff, the, this has been tremendous, giving us this information that you've now had five days to digest. My thought, board, is that we, we might sometime later in the year get kind of an update on this as more information becomes available. And it may be an opportunity for us to get more of our questions answered about the role of the formative assessments and the interim assessments and, and some of the process that they're, they're going to use. Last chance for questions? Jeff, as always, thank you so much for the presentation. It was great, the, yeah, I, I feel like I almost understand it. With perhaps an emphasis on the almost. The, we're now into section five, 5.1, Student Council Report. The, if, we're not, well, we can have one student council member report.
All right. Yeah, absolutely.
So we slightly mentioned Spamalot when Katie was here, but a couple weeks, at the end of October, Spamalot was put on by our theater, and it was amazing. The past two years, I was in Greece and I was in Pippin, and I have to say, this has topped the mark. This is, it was so good. I was so happy with it. So.
It was, let me interrupt. Michelle and I had the opportunity to go, and it's the funniest performance I've seen in a high school ever. It was, it was fantastic.
And then, so moving on to that, with athletics, the volleyball, CBU girls volleyball team won state championships. Which is very exciting because we're a first year team, first year ever, and we won.
Started by Lisa.
And, yeah, it was crazy. It was on Saturday, it was a day-long tournament at Johnson State.
And then also soccer, both soccer teams were in the championship. Unfortunately, the boys weren't able to get their, their win, but the girls continued to push their perfect season and third championship season in a row. So that's very, very impressive. Girls field hockey, they lost in a close match against South Burlington in the quarterfinals, which was, which was tough. And then football, we, we lost in the semis against South Burlington. But all around our fall, athletics did, did very well. Not to mention the cross-country girls winning and going on to New England and having Miss Eastman do quite well there.
And also the boys volleyball team, they were also in the finals against Essex, and they lost by two points, which is very close. Also, another team that's doing really well is Scholars Bowl. They went, they had a meet last Wednesday, I think, and they won 4-0.
It was a big statewide tournament down in Montpelier. So they, they're gonna have a banner for the gym, I think so. It'll be pretty cool, all the athletics and then Scholars Bowl. So.
That's good.
And some things, more with athletics, the Athletic Leadership Council, tomorrow actually, there's about 10 of us students, athletes going to the Heinsberg Elementary School, and we're gonna have a gym class with about 50 or 60 students. So that'll be a blast. That's just in the morning for about two hours. So our athletes getting out into the community and doing, doing some good work there. And also next week, we're gonna have some more reading days. I don't know if I've mentioned to you guys in the past about, all right, well, yeah, some of the athletes go to the descending schools and will read to first and second graders. So next week, there's a handful of us going to Shelburne, and we're gonna do the same thing, which is great. And then in more recent news, on Fridays, the annual dodgeball tournament, which is, yeah, which is put on by the junior class of 2015, they do it.
Are those guys students? Because they don't look familiar.
It's actually Jeff in a dodgeball.
I know, I'm throwing that first now.
Yeah, so they've been, the class of 2015's been organizing it the past three years. And it's just a, a big time school spirit in between sports seasons. Last year, there were, you know, the most teams ever, so I assume nothing less this year. Some of the requirements, has to be co-ed, so you can, and there's six, six students on it. So can be five guys and a, a girl, which is mostly the case. Or, or, you know, any sort of balance, which that may be. But what I was mentioning to you guys earlier, the Penguin Plunge Special Olympics, that whole event is starting up on Monday, is the school-wide assembly that will be going on. And a, a few of us will be making presentations. Myself, with one of my buddies will be making a speech, trying to rally student support behind our CBU Red Hawk team, which is going to be raising money for the Special Olympics of Vermont. And the best part about it is, in order to plunge in the lake in February, every member must, or participant must raise $150. And $25 of that money comes back through the CBU Unified Sports Program. And, you know, kids with intellectual disabilities who don't necessarily get those opportunities are able to go bowling or able to play bocce. Last week, like, the whole fall is generated around the focus on bowling. And then beginning of December is the Bowling State Championships for the Unified Sports and partners. So there are, you know, a lot of, a lot of students, there's about 15 students who went and were partners for the Unified Sports participants, which is very, very neat. And so very excited about this Penguin Plunge. Our goal this year, as I was talking to Jeff the other day, is to have 200 students jump in the lake, which, and our goal is to raise $50,000.
And how many board members would you like on that team?
Every single one.
Just wanted to make that clear.
No, I know, I know last year, David, you joined us, which is awesome. We're gonna try to.
What a good sport.
Exactly. Yeah, everyone's welcome, really trying to put it on some teachers as well. So it's not just a student thing or not. Good administration as well. It's a whole, every, you know, corner of CBU coming for this one main focus, which is great. It's absolutely awesome.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate. Oh. There's more. All right.
Something similar to that. In the second week in December, we're doing Cafe for a Cause, the student council is. And so we have chosen which organization the money that we raise is going to, and we're helping out this organization in Richmond called Our Community Cares, which makes lunches for students over the summer and vacations when they aren't able to go to school and get meals. And they also do summer programs for them if they don't have, you know, if they can't pay for daycare. And so that's very exciting, and we'll be delving into that with student council, getting more interest raised. And then.
And lastly, next week is a, a big school trip week. There's the Holocaust course, and those students will be leaving on Monday down to Washington DC to do their, their events down there. And then Princeton Model Congress, which is basically a, a Congress simulation down in DC with students from all over the East Coast. Go to Washington and propose bills and have committee discussions, which is very neat. So that's all going on next week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, next on our agenda is the principals report.
And as usual, the students did a very thorough job, so all I will add is a piece on student safety. I know there were some questions about what, what things we're considering and addressing. And for the first time in my recollection, we did a Phase 2 evacuation in late September, where we had all of the students evacuate the building as they typically would during, say, what we usually call a fire drill. Then it announced that it had become a Phase 2 and we have to evacuate the grounds. And everybody walked up to Pond Road, up that road that goes through the soccer and field hockey fields. And all the buses were there waiting for them and placards on the bus identifying what town they would be going to. And they got on the buses for each town. Teachers were on each bus, took attendance. And so we, we did a run-through of what it would look like if we, God forbid, ever had to have a Phase 2 evacuation. And we drove them all back to the school. A long field trip. But given, that gave us a lot of really good information. The safety committee has met and was meeting again in November to discuss tweaks and what things need to be put in place to make sure that we do it even more efficiently should we have to.
Jeff, when you take them to the back to the tents, is it like to a certain location or?
Yeah, the, well, that's one of the things they've discussed, yeah. That's one of the things they've discussed is whether you bring them to a central location. The goal right now would be to bring them to their homes.
I'm, I'm assuming that a future's principal report will get us an update on, on how this this is, the feedback and what the developments are, and my guess is, you guys will get another short field trip sometime in the spring.
We'll see.
The, the next item on the agenda is the First Quarter Financial Management Report, and if the Finance Committee would like to take it away.
I, well, you know, like many financial reports, we have good news, and we have good news, and we have more good news, actually, this is the next change, so, when we did the fourth quarter financial management report back in September, had to tell you that we were in a worse position than we had been when we had made those decisions about moving money for the fields and giving money to CY. We thought we had about 150, we thought we had $100,000 left for the budget session, right? So I had to tell you that it evaporated, we didn't have it, we'd be going into budget session with no budget for, no buffer for that. So the first good news is that, going through the audit review, Mike, Nadoff, the team there all found that they were off by about 80K in the right direction. So all of a sudden, instead of being, you know, really breaking with no buffer, that added 80,000, so we're back up to having that close to $100,000, should we choose to apply money towards tax, taxes in the budget. So that's the first good news. The second good news is, when you look through this, you'll see that in the first quarter, forecasted for the year, we're gonna be about $220,000 to the good. So, we underran spending significantly, about $280,000, or, this is the forecast, right? Not that it all happened in the first quarter, but the forecast as it stands now is that we will underrun spending this year by about $280,000. The revenue is about $60,000 light, so when you add those together, you get 220. I don't think there was, when we looked, went through the revenue, it's all small, 15,000 here, 10,000 there, it's kind of, all adds up, but nothing noteworthy that we should worry about this early in the year. So, we were, we're comfortably back in the black, and when we get to that point in January, where we need to decide if we want to apply some of our fund balance to taxes, we're in a better position. The third good news, just because, just because I like good news, is that the places that we're underrunning in expense is, is primarily in salary and benefit elections, and that has to do with, you know, this time of year, when we set the budget, we don't know who's gonna retire, and who we're gonna hire to replace, and who's gonna leave, and all that, and all just sort of broke in our favor, so the, the reason that's even better news than just underrunning is that that all translates into next year's budget. So we're starting, you know, next year's budget in a better position than we otherwise. So, it's the triple good news. None of it in concrete, of course, but really in places, underrunning in places that are forecastable. You know, it's not special ed, which can change on a dime, it's salaries for people who are in the building, so. Anybody else in the Finance Committee wanna join in?
We're all thinking money on the food service and doing well. A little bit about the construction projects, the lighting project, and the boiler project going along, so, everything's good there.
Any, any questions? Hearing none. We'll move to item 5.4, Committee Reports. We're gonna defer the, unless you have something to say, the Facilities Committee report until we do the bond vote debrief.
Well, there is more to the Facilities Committee than the fields, right?
Yes.
So we'll be meeting in the next week, probably, because we need to get a, at some point, we need to talk about what has to go in the budget for next year for boilers and lights and roofs and all that kind of stuff, so we just haven't had that meeting yet. And I think it's actually gonna get set up so that the first budget meeting, you'll see what the facility, what Kurt needs, Jeff and Kurt need, we will not have seen that yet, but we'll get through that and come back with a recommendation that's different.
The, we've heard from the Finance Committee, is there anything more than the Finance Committee wants to tell us? The, and Communications Committee, any?
I'm not, this is probably not the time that we want to open this can of worms, but we have been talking among ourselves about the relationship of the Communications Committee to outreach beyond what we had typically taken on, specifically the bond vote, so we can kind of put that into the debrief session, if you rather.
Yes.
Meanwhile, we are proceeding with our monthly articles and getting mixed cooperation, as we have here from the local papers, but those who are cooperating are cooperating, and I think that the, it wasn't Official Communications Committee, but I think that the interface on the insert that we had in the local papers for the bond vote, that all seemed to work well, and it made it to the papers, we spoiled it, last year's budget, I think it did, so, we're, we're working on those systems, they're getting better.
All right, thank you. The, next item, CSSU Debrief, let me just go over this quickly, the, at the CSSU meeting, a, a baseline budget with a 3% increase was distributed and explained by Bob. It is, it's very early, it's subject to insurances, particularly VHI, which, it's in the baseline now, 15, and the last communication we got, 15% increase, and the last communication we got is, it's going to be more like a 4.5% increase, so there's going to be some, some change there for the CSSU baseline and for ours. It also is going to change on budget assessments, their decision packets for English-language learners, we have an increase in non-English speakers in all of our schools, and we need to, we're going to need to take a look at, at adding something to the ELL, and, and there's gonna be a decision packet on access, the access program and contributions to that. The, the purchase services dollars portion of the budget will be at the next budget meeting, which I think is November 20th for the CSSU Board. Yep. The, and in their First Quarter Financial Management Report, they're nowhere near as successful as we are, there are only 95,000 favorable to budget. The, there was good information on the audits, they continue to be strong. A couple of our board members were at the CSSU Audit Meeting. The audits are now, instead of handling them on the board level, our board level are being handled at CSSU. We passed with flying colors, they told us that our fund balance is $377,554, which was nice. The.
That's before we add the 220 that we are currently running ahead, that's why we're, so 377 plus 220, that's 600. We have to keep 300.
Yep. So. So we're, we're, it's nice going into the budget season with at least one piece of good news, the, because I'm sure there's gonna be some bad news as we, as we actually see our baseline. We had a presentation on the Affordable Care Act, they did not solve the, the website problems for the federal website, but in this presentation, we did determine that, that the CSSU Administration Team seems to be at a very good level of understanding of what the ACA means for us, for our insurance, for our benefits to our staff. The, there was talk about how, how we might make the move to single payer in 2017, because that's the direction in which our legislature is going, the, and, and the pluses and minuses of our budgets going to that, making that move. And there, there are really not a lot of questions for us on our budget, we're well, we're well set. The, the primary question that I heard out of this, and perhaps the other members can, can add others, that, but we, we have to keep an eye open for movement from waivers. Under the ACA, employers such as UPS did recently can decide that they are not including spouses and families in their, in their healthcare, and waivers in other businesses may impact our insurance costs. The, again, the CSSU is, is, has to keep very close track of all of this because of some reporting requirements, so.
But if you have a budget that the budget year would be after January 1st, 2015, in which there, there might be some impact on our budget, and we need to think about that a little bit.
Yes. Yeah, they, the.
If we're a budget year.
Yes, and since we're doing the FY15 budget, the, it'll be part of our budget discussions, although the, the impression I got from the back and forth between the presenter and Bob was that, that CSSU did not need to worry about the impacts from 2015, the, but they'll tell us as we go forward, they have a handle on it. Any additions to the CSSU Debrief?
Well, two things, one, if you didn't get a chance to read the court report, you should read it, it was actually very interesting, this, with the ELL, it's not just that we're getting more non, or, people, kids who are not strong in speaking English, you get people who, kids who can't speak English at all.
Yeah.
And who have never gone to school, you know, so it's significantly tougher challenges, that's what I read out of it, and there's some other stuff in there that's really interesting, too.
And nice new acronyms. Yeah, yeah, and we need to learn those.
The, the other two I just thought were, one we should talk about, one is just interesting, is if you remember last year, during the budget, the CSSU, CSSU holds the budget for CY, and they, CSSU, but, the board voted to shift relative, deploy the cost against, across K12, they changed it to 6, 512 or 612. So we got an increase last year, because we're now a bigger percentage of the pool. They went back, promised to go back and do a little thorough scrubbing and try to do the dollars, they did all the work, and I think what I saw was that it's going back to the original number. So more good news, another $20,000.
The irony of that is, it took so much work last year to get them to assess us only half of the increase. It really was quite a battle, and then, and then to see this, it brought a grin to my face.
We'll see if all the K's try to get only half of the correction to last year's correction.
Yeah.
The other thing, David, I don't know how, how we do this, or the timing or whatever, but I'm a little concerned about access, so access is another program that when it doesn't break even, it fills to CSSU. And if you remember, last year, we gave them a pretty substantial amount of money, thinking that it would close the gap, it turned out that they had a really, really bad year, they didn't get any better, they're still in the red. I just, I'm uncomfortable, so, so Eddie's coming back to the CSSU Board with some kind of proposal, I think, to try to get some money from the CSSU Board on a regular basis to keep, you know, straighten, not just to right the ship, but on, he's realized that on an ongoing basis, he needs some help. But, then he said, well, if, they said, and if that doesn't work, he's gonna come to CVU. So I'm a little bit concerned that the CSSU Board's gonna tell him no, just because he'll come to us. I, David, he really just needs to talk to Colleen and figure out how that negotiation's gonna help. I mean, you know, if I was anybody but CVU, I'd say, let's just say no, the access is gonna continue, 'cause, 'cause CVU will say yes. I just feels.
Well, when we have that discussion, we'll be well-represented at the table.
Well, we'll also be outvoted.
Well, except, we weren't last year on, on.
We were in half.
We're not always outvoted.
No, I'm just saying, I don't think that it's, I just think it should be talked about, that, timing on that decision, just hitting us against each other is not.
I think we just have to help educate that it is a CSSU asset. We house it at CVU, but that has, that helped our $18 million bond vote, 'cause people were coming in this, that was years ago, but if people come in this building, and, and it really helps, I think, all our budgets, everything, and that, that's district-wide, so maybe we just have to help.
So maybe we should encourage access to have some, some program that takes place on athletic fields.
That's it. Under the lights. Yes, under the lights.
fundraising for the Belvedere Center, they offer courses and classes there, so.
The, one last thing, one last thing from CSSU, the, there is a November 20th Budget Meeting at 6 o'clock at the CSSU Conference Room in Shelburne. That's not of particular interest to you folks, but at 5:30, before that Budget Meeting, there is going to be an executive session on negotiations, and so, if those of you who can and would like to attend that executive session, it will be November 20th at 5:30 in the CSSU Conference Room, and it will be prior to the, the Budget Meeting that some of us unfortunately have to stick around and go to. That is not on our agenda on one of the dates, so mark it down. The next item, I, I think we're done with CSSU, the next is six discussion matters, 6.1, Budget Buddies, the, do we have anyone from Heinsberg?
Oh, man, I had him like that close, he can only come to two meetings, though, so it doesn't feel like he should come.
We were trying.
Did you talk to anybody?
We were trying to get Alan Mead to come and be a budget buddy for us, and it would have been terrific, the, for those in the audience, a former board member who has a, a.
Good head for finding the budget.
Yes, has a good head for the budget and a financial background.
Yeah.
We, we missed him when he left, we tried to get him back. The, the only other thing on Budget Buddies, there's still time, the, the, a distribution is going out to the Budget Buddies sometime before the end of this week, the, on just some background material, and Sandy, Sandy is actually going to distribute it to all of us as well.
Right.
So, and my thought on that was, was, it wouldn't be a bad refresher for all of us as we go into budget season to see some of that background information.
We got it electronically, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did it come out today?
It came out last week or something, didn't it?
No.
Does it have a packet of a bunch of different documents?
No, this is, this is a Budget Buddy package.
I didn't get it.
Yeah.
I got today's packet.
No, I, I think it's coming out before the end of the week.
They sent it to you special.
I think they might have, because I have it all right on my computer.
The, I know, that was me sending stuff that outlined what it was that we should be putting together.
Oh, I had it all.
Yes, yeah. My partners always tell me to read my emails.
I do, I download it.
The, the next item.
Wait, wait, um.
No?
Budget, are we getting food at the budget meetings? Just, 'cause I used to always forget the very first one, so we either just.
Oh, well, I, now that occurred to me, let me put, let me put food in big letters at the top of my agenda.
Jeff, this is where Sean would always write it down, because David won't remember to call you. Because I never remember. Someone just got to ask me.
Am I taking this out of that surplus you were talking?
Yeah, that's borderline that's on here, that's, I remember.
And it, it could be as good as the meal we had tonight.
Okay.
Would not be a problem with that. Budget Bond Brief, I've got to apologize, I need to stand up occasionally, because I'm too stupid, and I keep on bike racing, and I crashed once again, and I have a leg that's not working right, so it needs circulation occasionally. The, on the bond vote debrief, first of all, it's, it's, as I think we all will agree, it's a little premature to take any dispositive action tonight, less than a week after the bond vote. The, the Facilities Committee met with representatives of the Turf Field Committee on Monday for a debrief and kind of talking about appropriate steps going forward. The, I, I think what we will be doing on this going forward is asking the Facilities Committee to put together a, a proposal, or proposals for us to consider, after they have an opportunity to look, look more closely at, at a variety of information. to look, look more closely at, at a variety of information, work a little, get more information from the Turf Field Committee. We've been getting a great deal of feedback from a lot of members of our community. I have a stack of emails, not quite that thick, but they seem to be an awful lot. Pardon? I actually read them. And I highlight them with notes. But what I want to do is, I think it's important that all of us get this feedback from the, from the bond vote. The Williston and Shelburne, I know, have both, the individual members, or the members from each of those towns have gotten together and done a post on Front Porch Forum. And there, each of us has done a letter to the local paper. Ours will come out in tomorrow's edition.
As will ours.
Yeah. And the theme of both sets of communications is to please give us your feedback, because we have an important issue with deferred maintenance on our athletic fields, deficient and not appropriate athletic, outdoor athletic facilities. And we need our, we need community input on how we're, how we're going to deal with this going forward. The, have we done that in Charlotte or Heinsberg?
Well, our paper came out, where we had to submit our stuff for the paper before the...
Is it a monthly?
It's a monthly, it's, yeah, it's a monthly, so it's going to be...
Do you have a Front Porch Forum, though?
I don't read it.
I can get Front Porch Forum in Charlotte.
Can you do Front Porch Forum? And Marilyn's not going to be with us for a bit, so can you do a letter in that, kind of that format that I sent out to everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be great.
So, David, can I just clarify? Facilities Committee, I have the options that we had before, right? I can't guess what the community wants me to do. So, I really, you know, we'll get together and look at it. We have some new numbers. We'll clean up the options. We'll bring the options back that we looked at before. The Board really has to decide what way they want to go. So, I can't come back with new options. I don't have any new options. I have cleaner numbers on the options that we brought to the Board in September. So, I don't want anybody to think that I'm going to come up with some new Iowa option.
No, well, there may be a new, there may be new approaches to the same thing.
Well, I think the Board has to make a decision about if, you know, we brought the option that the Facilities Committee and the administration thought was the best solution. Apparently, there's, the community did not agree with us. And so, we, so we may need to say, well, we can't have the best solution. We need to have the second-best solution. Maybe that's what the Board wants to do. And the second-best solution could be any of the other options. So, anyways, so we do clean up the numbers and everything. I just don't want people to say, oh, well, Gene's going to like ramrod another option for us.
No, no, the, I assume that you guys are going to bring us the options that are available. And it looks like at the December 4th budget meeting, we will set aside half an hour to, for, for all of us to talk about the options and see if we can decide what it is that we, if, what it is we want to do in a January meeting, which is when we'd have to warn an article. So, that's the sequence. The communications part of this is, is we want to communicate to each of our towns. Are you on Front Porch Forum? Would you mind doing that post on Front Porch Forum?
I wouldn't mind doing it.
And if you, if one of you would also do a letter to the paper, even though it's going to be next month?
It'd be January, actually.
January? In which case the letter...
End of January.
No, it has to be in by early January, I believe.
But it doesn't go...
Yeah, we have people writing for each of the papers. He's just asking about Heinsberg.
This is Heinsberg.
The Citizen goes to Charlotte and Heinsberg.
They ask for the February thing by January.
Lorna, could you do both of the Charlotte papers? That would be great. All three. That would be great. The other thing to decide here is, is how we're going to disseminate that information, because we've, from what we've done in Williston, we've already gotten back emails. Shelburne has been getting a pile of them. You folks have been very good in forwarding them to me, so I have a pile of this stuff.
And what we haven't been forwarding you is the dialogue that's going on in Front Porch Forum. Some of it productive.
The...
I happen to have a copy.
So, at the, just before we started, Susan was suggesting that maybe the Communications Committee could play a role in this, in summarizing this and getting it out to us.
Or somebody could.
That would be the Communications Committee. Is the Communications Committee, I mean, the other alternative is that we send it all to my office, and I have them send it to Sandy, who periodically just sends everything out to the entire Board.
Well, what would the Board like? Would the Board like to see every communication, or would you rather see the summary?
I would rather see the summary.
Joan?
To Gene's point of you're not going to come up with a new thing, I just think it would be helpful for me to hear what folks are saying. I'm mad that you came out in November. I like it, you know, and get rid of all the editorializing. And what do people want? And somebody summarize, look at and condense this. Not that I want to miss anything, but I don't think we need a lot of the language and the conversation that's going on. That's not going to help us as a Board make a decision. But if folks are not understanding about the timeframe and felt the November time, you know, was slipped in, things like that would be helpful and not going to make us come up with a new proposal or, you know, extend it or any of that. That's the kind of information I want.
Well, then, the, if the Communications Committee is willing to do that, then that's the way we're going to get it.
Well, I guess I have a question about the protocol, too. So, what I've been doing so far, and I think the Shelburne representatives have, because we've all been copied on everything from everybody, is we're responding with a thank you for your thoughts email to the author, and then passing them on to you to deal with. Which, good luck to you on that. Well, there's just a lot to deal with. You know, there's been a lot. And so, one of the other things, and this kind of touches on this notion of passing a summary to the Board, is what we were talking about this morning, the idea of having sort of standard talking points or on certain topics that have come up repeatedly. And, you know, Joan talked about the timing and the one versus two, and, you know, there have been specific things that we keep seeing coming up. And, and prior to the vote, there was dialogue going on on Front Porch Forum that had incorrect information. But as an individual Board member, I couldn't respond to that in that forum. But if we could somehow, as a Board or the Communications Committee, respond to those things to at least keep, not to get into a dialogue, but to say, wait a minute, you know, here's, here's the facts. And keep it very even-keeled, yeah, very neutral. And in fact, I had three people email me thanking me because I put in this, I was the one who happened to put it in. It had all three of our names on it, this neutral thing saying, we want your feedback. You know, we're just, the Board's disappointed it didn't pass, deferred maintenance, we want your feedback. And that happened to hit on the same day that all of this total chaos on the topic of the fields came out. And, and I had people saying, thank you for being so calm, you know, because it wasn't part, I wasn't playing the game with what was going on in the other dialogue. But I do think that as a Board, we have to have a protocol on how to, how to answer these things and how to respond when it's a posting as opposed to a letter directed or an email directed to us as Board members. Because otherwise, I think that some of the misinformation that was going out on Front Porch Forum may have influenced the outcome of the bond vote. I think, as close as it was, I think that could have happened. And it was misinformation.
Yes, and I think you're not going to get a lot of argument with that, with that thought. But the, that we are going to want to work on going forward.
Proactively, but also reactively.
Proactively going forward, yes.
In the sense that, today, there was another post about CDU and turf fields. You know, it's a, we're a week, going to pass the vote.
I think there are a number of issues that we can identify and sort through. What we'd want to say, put out there factually. And I took a stab at that, and I think we could work on that some more. It would address, I think, what Susan's talking about. And it would be something that would be consistent from the Board and throughout the communities.
Right, and so, whether, you know, one rep from each town wanted to be the, you know, responder, responder, or the Communications Committee as a committee could join all the forums. I mean, we could do it that way. But the voice would be representing the Board. And that's tricky, because we have to then be aligned and present ourselves as a Board. And that's where it gets dicey.
Yeah, I was thinking more of a, more of a letter to the editor, that we control what gets said and what gets included and what doesn't.
Well, that's fine, but we don't control what other people are saying.
Understood. But we are responding to all of those Front Porch Forum posts by doing this.
But you're doing it so far after the fact, it's no longer relevant.
I think we need both. It's too long.
Yeah, Lorna?
I don't think, I don't think we can get into Front Porch Forum posts as a Board.
I think we're, I feel similarly, I don't feel comfortable using Front Porch Forum as a vehicle to communicate a whole lot to the community. I read it, I love it, you know, and it's really helpful, and I see, you know, all sorts of letters going through. I think you can say, if you want more information, you can go like website, or you can call me, and I'll send you a flyer if you're lost with information about the project or whatever. So, I wouldn't, I don't want to...
What's the difference, though, between sending them to a flyer where there's a pre-printed statement of our position or an explanation of our reasoning, or just posting it right on Front Porch Forum so everybody can see?
Especially if there's, if there's factually wrong information put out there to everybody who's reading it. Don't we have a responsibility to correct it?
I would feel comfortable saying, you know, I'm not sure all the facts have been understood by some, some people in the community, and here's a place to get some information.
Yeah, but don't you think people wouldn't, they wouldn't bother going to that website?
No. I don't know. Something about that, about...
There, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything wrong with either responding on behalf of the Board or an individual Board member responding...
As a Board member?
No, no. Responding as an individual, pointing out what the facts, what is incorrect.
Then you're not an individual, then you're a Board member. Because the only way you have the actual facts at your fingertips is because you've got the history of being here.
I would rather see us respond as a Board than an individual.
Then, then let's, then let's, let's have the Communications Committee, just kind of assemble and summarize the stuff. And, and I'm happy to work with you guys on, on what is an appropriate, just factual response. The, I, last week and this week, I've been wondering exactly how I've been making a living, because I've been spending most of my time on turf field email stuff.
Well, so here's what I think makes some sense, then, in terms of from this moment forward. If, if the three of us as a committee can summarize what's come in so far, then that should help us identify what points, you know, to Joan's point, what issues we want to develop as sort of standard response to in terms of factual information. You know, I've taken issue every time I hear somebody say this was a special vote, because this was our November elections. It happened in some of our towns. It was the only ballot item. But it's not a special election. It's a standard, you know, it's the November elections. So, am I right, are they right? That I don't know. But let's find out and have a standard response to that as a Board.
But, but to that effect, and a little bit to the getting into the arguments unnecessarily, does that, you know, might, the answer to that one might be, the Board is considering bringing this back in March, as opposed to debating whether or not it's the right thing to do in November.
Right, but I don't want to put it out there to say, so what do you think? That's not what I'm suggesting at all.
No, this is, this is not argument. This is just, just factual response. And what we need to do, because of the fact that we don't have a regular meeting until January, is, is just, I feel comfortable with, with turning this over to the Communications Committee, and I'll work with them. And if there's something that, that needs to be disseminated to all of us without breaking the public meeting rules, we'll, we'll do it, and we'll be able, we will be able to update stuff and, and have actual discussion that doesn't violate the public meeting rule during a couple of minutes during our budget sessions as we go forward.
I do have one question related to that. If we have our Communications Committee and our Facilities Committees meeting together, are we, have we created a quorum?
If everyone shows up, you have.
Susan's on both, so that may...
No, then you're all set.
Then I think we're okay, right? Then it's five of us?
You only get to vote once, though, Susan.
Well, no, I'm just saying, in terms of getting the facts right, you know, and making sure that we're...
You're all right.
So, we'd be okay to do that.
So, I might understand that the Communications Committee...
And we'd welcome you to join us.
Yes, all hands on deck.
I'm there, I'm there.
But you can't meet with them because that would be six.
No, you can meet with the Communications Committee, because that's only four.
Well, there's a question really for...
That will come out with a Board sanctioned something, article to put into our local papers, is that...
No, that's not, because we're putting articles in the papers anyway on all sorts of topics. But rather, to have at our fingertips, at our disposal, factual responses to misinformation that is being put out to the public.
On Front Porch Forum.
But that is just one, that is just one media.
And put that on Front Porch Forum.
So, if something comes through on Front Porch Forum that's factually inaccurate, we have standards?
I think it's really important that we not, that we make sure there's not bad information circulating.
Yeah, no, I'm with you on that one. I'm just saying, were you asking like the next part, Lorna? Do we, is the Board also going to do something in the local papers?
Well, and towards that, I think that what happened, and again, I'm speaking based on our... You want to talk?
You're on the roll.
Susan's on all the committees, she just doesn't talk.
Well, one of the things that happened in looking at this bond vote was that we, as a Board, pretty much said, you know, the community group is doing such a bang-up job, we'll just let them talk about it. And we were wrong to do that, because people wanted to hear from the Board. And they, and we weren't there. And so, I think that going forward with whatever proposal, if some bond is put forth, we have to take a very different role as a Board in terms of disseminating communication about what we're doing. And that's a whole separate issue, and that's a multimedia issue, and then we'll address that differently. But I think that we really fell down on this one. And I think that we have to acknowledge that we made a bad choice. Because the community was being informed of the facts by a group that was also trying to be a fundraising group. And so, their, their message was different.
Yeah, I guess I would only say that we did the same communications that we do for a normal budget, right? We did the flyer, we held the forums.
We didn't publicize the forums.
Oh, yeah, the same way we normally do. Yeah, same way. I'm just, I'm just saying that normally, that's all because people are expecting and they're looking for it, so...
Well, but, okay, so, but in the case of a bond, we had other things going forward.
Let me just, let me jump in here, because we're now running late. And some of this is, some of this is going forward. What we're dealing with tonight is, is a plan to get that community feedback, so that we all have it when we're here in December to take a look at what the Facilities Committee brings us, and when we're trying to get... Committee brings us, and when we're trying to get some sort of approach to this, yeah.
So the responses that you've already received.
I'll send.
Are you sending out?
No, I've just, I've.
Responses to, and should we be doing that?
Oh, I, no, I responded, anything addressed to me, I responded to. Anything you sent to me that, where you asked me to respond, I responded to them. Anything you sent to me where you said you'd made a response, I did not respond.
What I'm asking is, should we be sending any kind of response that's more than the one that we sent, which is basically, thank you for providing your input, and we'll be sharing it with the rest of the board?
Um, the.
You going backwards and, and re-answering those things? Should there be a more specific response?
Someone, apparently some were just acknowledged, yes.
That's also work.
And sure, sure, if it's appropriate to do that, sure.
I guess I'm uncomfortable with individual board members responding.
I'd rather.
Committee.
And that being perceived as responding for the board.
No, the committee.
Or committee.
Well, he's even saying that, until you see what the, you mean, do you wanna see what the answers are that we're sending before?
Oh, yeah. I totally accept. I mean, all we've done is acknowledge receipt, basically. Thank you for your.
That's what I did for the one that we're not.
And we'll, we'll share this with the board.
Right.
That's all we've done. And, and I think, at the moment, that's appropriate, that's all we should have done. But, and so now the question is, how are we gonna share it with the board?
My question was, is there any other response?
No, not until we have a, a common response.
Okay.
Or David's responding, on behalf of the board, as the chair.
The, which.
Yeah, I know.
Which I try not to do.
I just don't think it's.
No, the, but the, there's, there's, there's a distinction, the, when I'm talking about a response that goes beyond acknowledgement, it, it, I, I think it would be appropriate for our Communications Committee, without involving all eleven of us, to, for example, if someone says, you shouldn't have had the vote in November, the, the answer to that is, we scheduled the vote in November because that was the way in which to deal with the permitting issues.
Or do we not respond, is what you're saying, right?
I just think that's a slippery slope that I'm not comfortable.
I, I feel that way.
I'm not comfortable.
Yeah, and, and there's also kind of the issue is that nobody in Williston knows Susan or Susan.
Right.
Right? So for them to be responding to people in Williston, I.
Right, and I, I don't wanna sign on something, you know, sign off on something and, and that's as a spokesperson for the board, I don't, I'm not comfortable doing that.
So what the Communications Committee is going to do after this meeting, we're going to receive all the responses.
Well, first you can go to bed.
We're gonna summarize the information.
Yeah, and then just.
And then we're going to start putting together some of these explanations of the main issues that people were concerned about, we'll start putting together language, share that with you, you'll share it with everybody if you think it's important for everybody to kind of weigh in on it. So we'll start that work.
And we, one nice thing about being in budget season is we'll be getting together often enough, so that, so that if we need to talk about this with all of us, we'll be able to do it. So, does that sound like a reasonable plan going forward?
Yep. Can I just make one other comment that is somewhat related to this, but it came up in our meeting on Monday, not only do we have to educate our community, but we also have to educate our student population, because we have heard that there were some very strong factions or opinions being expressed amongst the students about.
And it got put on.
Arts against, and I guess it happened in the Heinsberg front porch forum?
I don't think so.
No, it was very, I didn't see anything after the forum.
Well, Shelburne wasn't pitting arts against sports.
No, but there were some very.
It was on Facebook.
I think we just wanna.
I think we just.
I guess all I wanna say is, if we're gonna educate our, our population, our constituents, we also have to educate our students, too.
And, and that, that's an issue, that's an issue for our administration, they're well aware of, of what went on, they, that conversation has already occurred with the administration, and it didn't need to, because of course, they knew about it far before, well before I did, so, so that's all.
But, but, just so, just so maybe either you're on a different path, or I just wanna clarify, I don't think we need to educate the students, then go out and educate their parents, I just really want the school to be okay. You know, if, if it's appropriate that the students not be involved, that's, I'm trusting your judgment on, on how the best way to do it, we can't have the school being torn up over this, so.
Right.
Okay, the, is there, is there any more we wanna talk about on this?
I, I'm not sure I'm really clear of what's going on here, and we have a slightly different cut on things, but I will put something up on front porch forum.
Just requesting feed.
Requesting feedback and.
Yeah.
That should have been.
Do you want our language?
Yeah. They should share language, I was thinking.
It went out, the, the language went out to everybody.
Can you send it to Lorna again, David, so that it's consistent?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got David's.
Yeah, and we modified it slightly.
All right, well, never.
Oh, yeah, everyone, everyone can modify it, that was just, that was the stuff Williston did.
And I would also encourage you, because of this question of individual board members responding, that you include all your towns' representatives in that message with contact information, so that although you're the one posting it, somebody could respond to Leah, or both of you, which is what's happened in our case mostly, if someone's sending an email, they're sending it to all three of us, and that way you are their elected representatives to this body.
I'll have somewhat different.
Did you have your hand up?
Um, yeah, I did, I mean, should, should we, should the school board have been advocating for this bond?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, we, we adopted the article unanimously, we're, it's the same way we'd advocate a budget.
There was some, there was some confusion, because the board can't spend money to advocate. We can't spend public money to advocate for the bond, because that would be unfair to the people who are against it, right? So that's, there is a really fine line, it, I understand it's gonna, we're gonna make some changes to the way the website's shown, because it looks like it's on our website. So there's some things that legally we have to be very careful of, I know Bob Mason is working with Elaine to make sure that all that stuff gets cleaned up.
Yeah.
But yes, I mean, if you can't advocate, if the board can't advocate for the bond, who can? You know, it's, we certainly, if we choose as a board that's the right answer, we should be able to advocate for it, you just can't use public money, can't use the printers, you know, the copiers, and can't use the money to buy an ad in the paper, that kind of stuff.
Quiet.
You're quiet?
I'll, I'll have a slightly different perspective of something, I'll just say it briefly. On our front porch forum, the people that were very against, at least in Charlotte, the bond, were people that are very against a lot of budgets in Charlotte, and they're, you know, the same set of characters that I see, you know, I had for the last twenty-some years, speaking up against the school, and the taxes are too high, but, so I think sort of identifying why November versus March is somewhat trying to look for a reason to support their.
Yeah, and I wouldn't advocate doing that, no, no, so I would rather not.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Right, right. Well, actually, that's one thing, is, is the responses, once we get this template of responses, should the town, you know, so like, the Williston reps decide one of us is gonna do it? Because we know our town.
I think that's all open for discussion, how to.
That would be my inclination, but, but let's have a quick talk about that when, when you guys have something for us, who knows, it may be as quickly as Monday.
Oh, yeah, well, I have nothing to do this weekend.
It'll be Monday.
And I have, and I have plenty of time.
I'll try, what, grade the sixty term papers on that, and I'll do this, no problem, I'll do it.
What's the subject?
I don't even remember.
The, thank you all, the, the, I, I don't know how you folks felt, but I, I had a very tough time sleeping that night, I was, I was very distressed, because I had assumed that it was going to pass, and, and I was, I was really taken aback, and, and so, it'll be nice to figure out why this happened and what we can do going forward. Yep.
I didn't know if you were going to say thank you.
To.
I can, to, to the group, I mean, it was, it was.
I, I say thank you to them every time I see them, and I'm willing to do it several times tonight. Yes, yes.
It was such a, I think, shock and disappointment, not, not shock, but it hurts to have no said, and, and I really appreciate that they were.
Yeah.
Positive and said, well, March is gonna be a lot colder, so it was like, yes, yes, they're in it, so.
Joe, we can't, we can't thank them enough, so thank you for having done it again, the, because we can't.
Some haven't been in, in all of this.
And we'd like to thank the representatives of the school board that did come to the polls that day, thank you. I know it was cold, and you have other stuff going on, but we appreciated it, and I think the public did, too.
Right, and thank you guys all for coming and joining us, you can, we're not going to do bond vote stuff anymore, so you can feel free to leave if you wanna miss the rest of the stuff. The next item is Action Matters, and seven point one is approved purchased services. We talked last meeting about purchased services, the, the, the purchased services that CDU uses is IT, CY, food, and that's in the sense that our, our cafe employees are paid by CSSU, transportation, the psychological services, occupational therapy, and English language learners. We went over this a month ago, where we are, we were told to, I was told to tell the CSSU that we were in favor of those purchased services, and we now just need to confirm that with a vote.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, we have approved purchased services. The next item, the, this is for members to our principal search committee, we, at the last meeting, we decided that there should be three, someone far more clever than I said, why don't we vote on them, the, and, and I apologize for not thinking that before, and that's what we're doing tonight, five people have expressed an interest, in alphabetical order, they're Susan Holson, Jean Jensen, Lorna Jimmerson, Polly Malik, and your chair, and.
I'm, I'm willing to withdraw my name, so we don't have too many Williston reps, so.
We now have four, the, and Susan Holson, Lorna Jimmerson, Polly Malik, and me, and the, alphabetically, Susan, do you wanna take about ten seconds and say anything? Maybe fifteen.
You want me to say something?
Your election speech.
Five left.
Totally, one of the reasons that I put my name in was because I do think it's really important that we have multiple towns represented on this board, for the sake of appearances. I don't think that it matters in terms of outcome, as to how that's gonna look, or how that's gonna act, but how it's gonna look to our, our communities, I think, does make a difference. So that was one of my motivators. But I, I obviously think that the, the role of principal of CDU is a huge position, huge job, it's important that the right person is in it, and having done principal searches a couple of times in the past, I just thought I'd throw myself out there.
Thank you. Lorna?
I think the principal position is probably the most important position in the supervisor union and across all the schools, and I think is the person responsible for setting school climate and enforcing it, and, and, so I can't say how important I think it is, not that I would be the person to make the best decision, but I, but I am coming at it with a sense of, that I wanna be involved in that decision, and I represent Charlotte, one of the smaller towns.
Knowing the importance of having our board chair on the committee, I'm gonna withdraw my name, because I agree with Jean that to have a skewed Williston search committee would be unfair, and I know that it's important for you as our board chair to be on that committee, so I withdraw.
Well, there are three of us, and, and that didn't give me a chance to speak, which will make up for Susan's presentation.
You ready for a motion?
The, the, thank you, I, I feel it's very important that the chair be on it, the, that we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor of the, these three representatives signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, Susan, Lorna, and I are the representatives. The item seven point three, approved China trip, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, can we have, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a lot of angst.
One of us get to be a shopper?
That's Chinese, were you?
Yes.
I can carry a lot of.
Yeah, Lorna wants to.
I'm volunteering.
I mean, they, they, there's a schedule, there's no cost, there's no who's, who's eligible, there's, there's nothing.
There's not a lot of documentation.
And my understanding was because it's the, it's a repeat performer, and it's been several times in the past, that I, at least the people who passed this on me said, oh, they've seen all this information. I can, we can put it in for next month if you'd prefer.
Put it in next month.
Just next month.
Or when at next board meeting, sorry.
Was that too late?
I mean, just next time, make it hinder their.
January too late? I'll have to get back to him then.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I would be okay approving it, assuming that the numbers were, I don't know, I hate to hold everybody up.
Yeah.
I asked the same question, I said, they've seen all the information.
Well, so that would suggest it's not all that different.
Well, in the past, wasn't the first, wasn't the first trip, like, for those who only were taking Chinese?
And they didn't acquire enough kids and stuff.
And then some, I mean, my daughter came home and said, oh, this, I heard the China trip's open for everybody, and I'm like, oh, really? You know, so, it, I'm not sure.
Let's, let's do it, let's do it this way, let's, if, if, they can bring us more information for January, that would be great. If they need something before that, we, we do have other meetings, and this will take about two seconds.
We used to have a business meeting for a half an hour in December, for us to sleep up this stuff, so it wouldn't be unheard of to do it.
So.
It's like half an hour before the budget.
We, we do need more information, we, we'll take it up in January, if they need an earlier decision, let me know, and we'll, we'll take it up in one of the December meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, just so they, they know there could be different board members, we don't want it to be an assumption that, that it'll be.
Okay. All right, the next item, consent agenda, could I have a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. The next meeting dates, I don't need to read these to you, because I think all of you can read, the.
Do we have a budget?
Yeah.
This is what this is?
Yes, yes, and it's gonna get passed out.
That's a great idea. I know you were saving that to confirm next meeting dates, right?
No, I was, actually, I was saving it to the very end, the, I just wanted to, I just wanted to remind you once again about the, the negotiations meeting in Shelburne on.
Charlotte, no.
Charlotte on the twenty.
Oh, there's.
On the twenty, yeah, yeah, at the CSSU conference room. And this is the, the baseline budget, it's what, we'll have a little opportunity to talk about it on Monday, and we need to.
This is, this is based on our current baseline, then.
Yes.
Yes, yes, this is.
Time.
Well, we'll see special end.
This was, I, I'm not gonna be able to answer many questions on this, guys, because.
You're just supposed to say, yes, it is, Jean.
Because, because.
That's what Megan just did.
Someone put this stack of paper on my notebook at five, and I did not actually see who did that, although I think it was Bob.
That's a good chance.
Yeah, the, the last item, ten point O executive session, the, we need, was everyone at the negotiations executive session previously? Then we don't need to do it for that. Let's go into executive session for about. Let's go into executive session for about less than five minutes, just so I can update you on what I know about the principal search.
And will, and will be done from there?
Yes, yes.
So these guys can wrap up.
Yep.